I would like to introduce the facilitator and the speakers. First of all, Ms. Emiho Izumi, Chief Manager of Global Partners Consulting Group. Shohar Vak Ibrahimov, son of Yanmar Energy System Company Limited. And Shira Damia Botorinda, program manager of Impact. The facilitator will be Professor Lailani Alkanthara, Dean of the College of International Management of Ritz-Mecon Asia-Pacific University. Professor Alkanthara, over to you. The screen is yours.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening wherever you are. Well, thank you so much for joining us in this special session of the Innovative City Forum 2021. Please allow me to introduce myself. I'm Lailani Alkanthara. I currently serve as the dean of the College of International Management and Graduate School of Management in Ritz-Mecon Asia-Pacific University. And I'm pleased to be your facilitator for this session on a very important topic for and in Japan and globally. So our theme for this session is diversity and inclusion, paving the way for the future of Japan. And I'm joined today by three panelists, our APU alumni, and we will get to know more about them later. So perhaps I could ask them to just briefly say hi to everyone. Miho?
Hi, everyone. I'm Miho from Singapore.
Shira?
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening, Japan. I'm Shira, currently based in Switzerland.
Shen?
Hi, everyone. This is Shen. Looking forward for today's session.
Yes, well, thank you so much. So you'll get to know more about them later. But now, please allow me to briefly introduce to you Ritz-Mecon Asia-Pacific University just for you to have a context of where we are coming from and for you also to know like how diversity and inclusion is also being promoted in APU. So please allow me to share my slides. All right. That's our campus. Isn't it beautiful? Right? So it's not really hard to fall in love with this beautiful campus. So this is how APU looks like. And as you can see here, going totally global. So our university, we pride ourselves as being truly global here in Japan. And this university, APU, is founded with three 50s concept. The first 50 is that 50% our student body would be composed of 50 countries. Like, our students would be coming from 50 countries across the globe. And another 50 is that 50% of the students would be international students. And another 50, the third 50, would be 50% of our faculty would be international faculty. And another difference that we have is that we do have two intakes, spring semester and also fall semester, so that we could adapt to different educational system across the globe. At the same time, we also do offer dual-language curriculum. So almost all of our courses or subjects are offered both in English and Japanese. So students do have that freedom to choose whether they would like to obtain their degree in English or Japanese. And so, which means also our students have that opportunity to develop their language skills. If international students would like to strengthen their Japanese skills, they could do so. If Japanese students would like to strengthen their English skills, they could also do as well. In addition, they also have other options of learning other Asia-Pacific languages in APU. And this concept of three 50s was considered as impossible. Like, many people thought, really? You could have this kind of campus, this kind of universities, university? And APU actually did it. So APU successfully realized this concept of three 50s. Currently, APU has a total of 5,516 students. Forty-six percent are international students. In the College of International Management, we have 51.1% as the share of international students. And 49% of our faculty are international. And we actually surpassed the target of 50 countries. Now, our student body is coming from 95 countries. And if we're going to include our alumni, now our alumni body is representing 161 countries and regions. And many people would actually say that APU is like a mini United Nations. Like, it's a place where actually you could you will have a chance to meet people from different parts of the world. And that's why it's called also, it's called a mini United Nations. And here, you could see the figures of how rich our alumni body has become. And the vision that we have for our students, for our alumni is that our alumni would have this power, this ability to change the world for the better. And now, our alumni, as mentioned earlier, they're coming from hundreds of countries. And now we have 20,000 alumni. And there are 37 chapters across the globe. And our alumni has different career paths. Some of them are entrepreneurs. Some of them are working outside Japan, like Miho and Shira. And some of them are working here in Japan, like Shen. So we do have, our students have different career paths that they take after they graduate from APU. So I'll be speaking more about also what opportunities people would have to promote diversity and inclusion with us later. But for now, I know you're all excited to hear from our panelists, right? So the three panelists that we have today, they're all graduates of APU. And they will share with us their experiences and also their aspirations for Japan. So we'll first have Miho. Miho, so could you briefly introduce yourself? And also explain to us what you think about diversity and inclusion?
Thank you. So I'll go for my slides. Do you all can see my slide? Okay, great. Good evening, everybody from Singapore. My name is Miho. I'm truly honored to be here today. Today's agenda is very simple. I will talk about my own experience of diversity and inclusion. And I'd like to share my own experience of being at APU and also my business school time in UK and as well as workplace diversity and inclusion, which I had been working in other countries quite a lot. And lastly will be my message and recommendations to Japan. So here we go. Once again, my name is Miho. I'm currently living in Singapore. And I'm a Singapore Certified Management Consultant, helping Japanese companies internationalization and oversee market entry in Singapore. And most of my career is actually overseas, where I was a practitioner of business expansion in early years of my working life. And currently, I am supporting companies and as an external advisor. So I hope today's session gave some insights to you from one of the Japanese who lives, studied, and works outside Japan. So how was my APU life back then? Before I enrolled at APU, I actually had a privilege to study in year seven, where I had my first encounter of being foreigner outside of Japan. And that was an eye-opening experience. I really loved it. So I chose to study international relations in APU, where at that time, APU was the only university who offered bilingual education, which we can learn about well, both in English and Japanese. I wasn't hoping to just learn about English as a language, but I hoped to use English to learn about work. And I really enjoyed the time in APU, where we have AP house, a dormitory, where students from all over the world and also Japanese students live together in the one dormitory. And we really have everyday life together, where we call it in Japanese, "onaji kamanho michioku", in English meaning of becoming close friends by living under the same roof. APU gives opportunity for all students to do this experience in the early stage of one's life, when they are teenagers and also at the early twenties. Sometimes you will face differences, even disagreement. But after the discussion, you will find a solution together. This experience really shaped who I am today. And I also pursue my MBA in UK Manchester Business School. It was another good opportunity. I had seen and also experienced the deeper diversity and inclusion. Under graduate study at APU, we were around the same age, without much working experience. However, when I went to pursue MBA, I was also in my thirties and having working experience of more than 10 years in my life. But cohorts were from various backgrounds in terms of nationalities, age, family responsibilities, education, working experiences. So I truly enjoyed how diversity gave meaningful discussion, even when we are solving the same case study. And I also had my two babies during my MBA study. That was a very, very, very intensive three years of my life. And here I am in Singapore, where as a country, diversity is a top priority in workplace. And country is welcoming talents from all over the world. However, it cannot be anyone. And Singapore sets high standard of talent requirements to giving out the working visa. As well as such the regulations, authority also gives guidance to companies to appreciate diversity for growth of the companies. Companies are required to set the equal opportunities policy to align with government regulation initiatives. When companies are not complying, nor having signs of favoring one nationality, authority really steps in and guide companies for improvement. So diversity and inclusion in workplace where I have been seen, three things that I have learned and that I've seen as very important, that diversity is not only about having more women or having overseas talents at workplace. Of course, it is better than having none. But it's not about having the number of women or even overseas talents in the workplace. But it's rather in the mindset and corporate culture of accepting different background of people. And diversity is not only about surface diversity. And psychological safety is a must when ensuring DNI is still in the company culture. Most important thing is to have psychology safety among staff, where staff are afraid of speaking out different opinions and leaders are not listening. Nobody will appreciate diversity and differences. And importantly, having different opinion is nothing to do with personally disagreeing nor criticizing others. This is for sure need some experience of having constructive discussion and criticisms to make something better together. And it is really important that top management really set strong commitment. It is good to do, to set a policy, to really show the commitment. And sometimes it really works. As a woman of two kids, I can share that the career is not just about a job, but it is about a way life itself. And there are times that we cannot work, especially for women, where we need to deliver babies, where we need to look after children or even looking after the aged parents who need care. But there should be a way where society can help system to accept people at different stage of life to always come back to work and be part of society to contribute the way they can. Now, we human live about 100 years. So having a break, go and study after some time at work and come back to work again and sharing the new skills and experience learned really is important. And it all should be flexible. So the last message that I have for everybody today is I strongly believe that DNI is not something big, but it can start from knowing little more about people around you. And you will be able to experience it. And it's not something that only people who have privileged to go overseas can do it, but everybody can do it. So do not be afraid of being different. World is changing. Let's be humble but confident to be true you. Thank you.
Thank you, Miho, for sharing with us your life, your experiences and your view about DNI. So you studied in APU, you also studied in UK, and now you're working in Singapore, and now you're a mother of two. I just wonder, like, how did your view and attitude toward diversity have changed over the years?
Sure. Going to APU was really eye-opening, truly. Where one step going to APU campus, you will see friends from all over the world. And they are okay to be different. And they actually enjoy it. That is something that is very difficult to have in normal school in Japan, maybe. So that was a very, very big difference after I stepped into APU.
You started to feel more comfortable being different?
Yes. And it is accepted and really can be very different.
Like, before joining APU, did you plan to go for master abroad and also like to work abroad? Did you have that plan?
I had a dream, but I didn't really feel that it is possible. But after I went there and APU also gave some confidence that I could do so by having lots of experience of having different students around the world and also I have some privilege to go as a delegate to the World Student Conference. That really gave me a confidence that maybe I can even study or even can work overseas.
Well, it's so great to hear, Miho, and we'll hear more from you later. So now, yes, thank you very much. Now we'll hear from Shen. Shen, could you briefly introduce yourself and also share with us your experiences with DNI?
All right. Once again, thank you very much for giving this opportunity to be the panelist of this really interesting and also well, encouraging the forum we're going to have today. Apologies that I have also one daughter and son. And a little bit, you might hear the voices. So they really want to be part of this session, unfortunately. So I just let them to be there. So I think it's a part of our topic today. So I think everybody will accept that. All right, let's get started. My name is Ibrahimov Shohar Vak. A lot of people know me as a Shen, so you can call me Shen. I work for a company called Yanmar Energy System. It's a part of the Yanmar Holdings. A little bit about myself, I'm originally from Uzbekistan. Well, it's a Central Asian country, which was a part of the Silk Road, if you know about that. And then also part of the USSR, which is the Soviet Union. So it's a mixture of the, we got the Russians, we got the Turkish, and we got some, a lot of the mixture of the cultures. So you can see that some sort of the DNI was already there from the past in that region. So in APU, I studied major international management and marketing strategy. So a little bit about my hobby, hiking and playing football. So I have got the three, two to three, the max a week. So we do also have that here in Tokyo, we play with Japanese and also international, including Uzbek students and also the Shakajin, the people who work. So I also, apart from the work and also my day-to-day life, I also do the Sambo Linting. And one is a generous charity project. We help the poor people, students in Uzbekistan, to help them with their education. So we support them to get the basic education rights, including the school and also some extracurricular activities so that they can be the good leaders in the future. And also, and second one is my carrier guide project. This is one of the, I would say that the part of the passion that I do help foreigners here in Japan with their designing their carrier and also finding their way here in Japan. So and that's why you could say that I have been here working almost 11 years in Japanese company. So yeah. Okay, let me talk a little bit about my career. After graduating APU, I joined the Yanmar, as I mentioned. And then my first dispatch was the logistics service. And I was in charge for the international export and also import. Then after three years, I was transferred to Yanmar Holdings and parent company there. I was in Corporate Strategy Department. From there, I came back to Yanmar Headquarter. And I was there in Marketing Strategy Department, doing a lot of the new market developments. And also, apart from that, I was also new business development projects, especially in areas like construction industry, agriculture industry, and pleasure money. So now I'm in the energy system, overseas sales. So you can see I'm in the one company, but within the one company, whole Yanmar family, I have been in several different companies, including the headquarters. So apart from there, my work, I was also acting as a bridge person between the foreigners in Yanmar and also the company, especially HR, and also supporting the HR team with their recruitment and also mentoring the newly joined foreigners as they have the struggle to get used to the environment and other projects. So my life in APU, basically, as already mentioned, that APU, when people ask me about, tell me about APU, I will say that just imagine the globe and you make it small and you put it on the top of the mountain in Deadpool. So that's the APU, basically. I have done a lot of the extracurricular activities, organizing the APUs, for example, business case challenge or being the camp leader of the Kumon English Camp. Or even being, one of the things I like about multicultural week about APU is being Uzbek, I still remember you could have a chance to participate in several multicultural weeks. One thing I remember that we had in 2008, if I'm not mistaken, or 2009, we had this African week, multicultural week there. We had this dance and all people from Africa continent. And there is a two guys, basically. One is Uzbek and another one is my friend from Holland. Two of us, we are the internationals. That was a kind of the life in APU, basically. This is what you call the, you don't, basically, you build, as long as you want, as long as you have the will, and you can be part of everything. And there is no superior or inferior, that type of, everyone basically will equal, that kind of mindset. And having the, or working with several students or students from various countries was, like, it was day-to-day life for us. And being unique and different was valued and accepted. That was a part of APU. I still, honestly speaking, miss that part. Since I moved to Osaka and Tokyo, so that was a life of APU. So let me talk about, a little bit about the, after my, doing the projects with my carrier guide, this is the three things that I face a lot or I can, I listen a lot. Like, the foreigners are expected to think and act like a Japanese. I hate the word to say, but it's a Japan-ization, I think. There is this, the term, if it's okay to say. And being unique, like which I used to be in APU, which we used to be in APU, wasn't accepted or wasn't okay in the society or in the company you enter, especially in the beginning. Or if you have your own firm opinion, you consider the self-assertive. Like, you know, in Japanese, they say, "jikokushouga tsuyoi", like these kind of things, like, you know? So it's not positive, as you can see. And the third one is the foreigners, just because of their language barrier or the language, not being able to speak the fluent Japanese, they accepted or they considered as a weak or burden in some cases. That's unfortunate, but yeah. So there are a lot of the good things are going on for the last five years from my experience. So let me share about that. Positive and improvements, a lot of the policies being set up from the company's top management within the workplace, the more like the foreigners are being hired in that company, for example, including Yanmar. And also that this part is really important. I think that the companies started to set up the facilities or the rooms for people with the religious and cultural needs, you know? That was a kind of, I think that Japan is doing good job, at least the, some companies that I know. And also, obviously, the more opportunities for females in the management level. And the last but not least, that the paternity leave for male employees. So I have already took in the beginning, when my son was born, for one month. Now, again, from December, I will be taking that another two months. So this kind of things is becoming normalizing, I would say that. But of course, it depends on the company. On the other side, there are also other points that need to be improved. Although I wrote down a lot of things, but I will be, one thing that I would say that it's a lack of leading opportunity roles for the foreigners, especially in the Japanese company. And I have been working the 10 years, but you still, it's, you have to cross some, because there are some people on the top of you, you know? So it's, you have to first respect them. That kind of the mindset. Or sometimes, like, you know, the some managers fail to maximize the skills of talented foreigners and they just sometimes utilize it just to translate them because they know English or because they know the local language, you know? The native language. These kind of things, I think, that needs to be improved. So my recommendation to foster DNI in the company would be, I put it three layers, as you can see, the top management, middle management, and also regular employees. So I think every, the layer, wherever you stand or wherever you are, I think you have the role and the the role and responsibility, and also you have that the power to foster the D N I or strengthen inside the your company. So the first thing, uh the from top management is to provide the more equal and leading opportunities for the foreigners. Just let them, give them the opportunity, you know, so you never know what things might come. So unless you don't do it, you don't know it. This is the, and the second is that maybe the some companies, they already started, performance based evaluation system should be adopted. This is a must, I think, especially because of the, thanks to COVID, I would say, thanks to COVID, that the some companies started to the adopting this. And for middle management, I would say that having an open one on one communication with your team member, whoever they are, whether they are foreigners or they are females or they're minorities, like, you know, that they within this D N I. The and also be open for the the foreign ideas. That's why I put it the foreign ideas, because for my background, because whenever you have this idea, they're kind of, as long as they are, if they are not similar to the the ones we have in our team, then it will be like uncomfortable or they are different, so they are not accepted most of the time. So be open for the foreign ideas. And if you are a regular employee, it just have an open communication, just show the interest to them, you know? So listen to them, then you will understand that the why these people matters. And if you forget the all of this, but my last message would be, let's keep this, listen to them, include them, and empower them. When I mean the listen to them, I you already know it, but when I mean include them, so when you are setting up the the policies related to D N I, include them, because most of the cases, these minorities are not included in making the policies. And the last, not the least, empower them, give them the more opportunities, and you will ne- you never know what will come. That's all for my uh session. Uh thank you very much. I hope I could deliver the message.
Thank you, Shan. Um you have given us a lot of insights about diversity inclusion, and we'll discuss more about uh about your, more about your thoughts on D N I. And I believe many of our participants are interested to know more about Uzbekistan, uh about your country, about your culture, and I and knowing other cultures as part of diversity, uh right, Shan? So um if there's one thing, if there's one thing you would like um people from Japan and other countries to know about working with with people and companies from Uzbekistan, what would that be?
Wow, that's a good question, actually. Uh thank you very much. Uh before that, let me lo- little bit talk about the Uzbekistan as you asked that. So the Uzbekistan, as you know, is in Central Asia. The majority uh of the population are the Muslims. But we do have the also Christians and the Jewish and Orthodox and other, uh the minority religions also. But this country has been so united that the, I could, I remember that I I used to have the Christian babysitter, for example, when I was young. And we used to exchange the foods, so that was a kind of culture in the beginning. So we used to uh have the, a lot of the common uh interaction with this uh different type of the background people uh from the young age. So uh and having that mind, so Uzbek people or Uzbek companies, I would say that the, they do with the flow. They don't get prepared in in advance like Japanese people do. Like, for example, when I came to Japan first time, they asked me like the, what's your plan for the next six months? Because we want to have you present your culture in our school. I was like, excuse me, I don't have any plan for next week. You asking me for the next six months? So that was it, like, you know, so be with the flow. The let them accept them, you know, so don't just put the the high Japanese, the mentality or the business, the concept or the ethics on the top as a criteria, but let them be, because we are more flexible and we go with the flow, that type of the culture. I hope I do answer.
Yeah, well, thank you, um Shan, and I I I could sense your um strong passion about, you know, how how you could, you know, as in Uzbek, a a a somewhat, some someone from Uzbekistan um adapting, adjusting your your life here in Japan. Is that also the reason why um you continue to um to be committed to diversity and inclusion? Because from your presentation, I could see that I think you're also um actively involved in promoting D N I in your company.
Well, I would say that that although that we always talk about the negativity in the company or in in our life, but there are many positivity we have, I have seen, to be honest. I have seen a lot of the good. I was lucky enough to work under the the super uh good supervisors who encouraged me to become who I am I or who I am right now. So I end up as a, as a, how can I say that, as a thank or gratitude to them, to their work, I would like to give it back, or as they say, pay forward to the juniors. Because I did, I did also experience a lot of the the tough time or the challenge to get used to to this the 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 culture or the Shakajin, the lifestyle, you know? So I and I thought that it's a good opportunity for me to at least have my juniors not to experience that level of the s- the struggle. Or at least have them experience the struggle, but little. So that was the kind of passion that I had.
Well, thank you. Well, um the the what you mentioned earlier, I I think I I found that very, uh I found out, I found that very insightful in a way that the more open you become to diversity, the more chances actually that you would meet great people. Then you mentioned that of um earlier when you answered that question, and you then, right now, you want to pay it forward and making sure then that people around you value and value, appreciate, and also then benefit from diversity. Thanks, um Shan. So um now we move to Shira. Shira, so please tell us about yourself and also how are things going on with you?
Hi, everyone. Uh thank you, Kantoar Sensei, and it's it's really great to also hear experiences from different perspective from Shan and and Mihon. So let me uh share also my screen and Great, can My name is uh Shira. I'm originally from Indonesia and currently based in Europe, uh between Germany and Switzerland. I graduated in A P U in two thousand thirteen. And uh my work at the moment is as a program manager eh at NPACT, a nonprofit organization that empower entrepreneurships uh in emerging markets uh like Indonesia, Mexico, India, Sri Lanka, Kenya, Ghana, South Africa, and Asia. Um before I start, I would like to ask uh you a question. For you who are uh watching uh this at the moment, what do you think, which image ref- reflects diversity and inclusion more? First, group of people from different countries and background embracing one's culture? As to the second option, one female representative in a meeting? Or the third, eh group of colleagues from different countries? I guess most of you will not answer too, I hope. Eh then again, people's perspective of or comprehensive and understanding about diversity and inclusion are different. And now I would like to move on uh to my perspective and experience uh of diversity and inclusion. So this is what I would like to share with you, um my A P U journey and also professional journey, my experience about diversity and inclusion uh at A P U, and diversity and inclusion in the workplace, the comparison between Japan and Germany. First, uh I would like to share that I moved from Jakarta, one of the biggest city in Southeast Asia, to Beppu, eh the city of Onsen eh in Japan. And uh during my A P U journey, I had the opportunity and privilege to have first internship in the embassy of Afghanistan in Japan in Tokyo. And the second one is to have also internship in Sagake, so Saga Prefecture International Relations eh Associations. Um here, I already immersed to different cultures and different point of eh thinking. And also, I've done several part time jobs uh within A P U and Beppu City. From Yume Town Mall in Beppu to a Sugino- Suginoi Hotel, one of the biggest Onsen hot swimming pool hotel in Beppu, and also eh extracurricular activities that previously eh Shan and eh has also eh explained about multicultural eh activities and so on. I will explain more detail about these activities and how I experienced diversity and inclusion at A P U. Later on, I graduated from A P U. In two thousand and three, I was majoring international governance, so international relations. And my bachelor thesis was about conflict and peace between the free action movement eh and Indonesian government. So regardless, I'm studying in Japan, I still uh A P U still give me po- possibility and flexibility to do research in the topic that we are passionate about or the topic that we are curious about. And uh fortunately, I received an award of a certificate of merit for outstanding quality undergraduate eh thesis. I move on eh with my eh with my personal professional experience at Mitsubishi Motors. Um Mitsubishi eh co- Jirosha Kogyo Kabushi Daisha eh in Tokyo. So my Tokyo life uh started. One of eh also the benefit of being an eh an A P alumni is that you speak more than one languages. And that's what eh company in Japan are looking for. Uh thanks to that, I was able to support investment project of est- establishment of manufacturing factory in Indonesia and created three thousand jobs. Uh during my work time, I also started volunteering with Refugee and Empowerment International in Tokyo, where we do fundraise and we we visit the project between eh Myanmar and Thailand. And uh during my time uh at Mitsubishi, one of the uh dream that I had when I was in A P U is to go travel and work in different places in the world. And thanks to A P U experience, I could realize that in my professional experience. Uh in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, I was a contract coordinator for Switzerland and Greece eh in the European market, and also the global event coordinator for Geneva International Motor Show at Mitsubishi Motors. I had also opportunity to travel eh there for a business trip. And moving on, I, after six years of professional experience in Japan, I realized that something is missing. There is a challenge that I would like to have more that I haven't got exposed or opportunity eh to to move on with it. And I decided to move to Germany to pursue my master's degree eh in international affairs at Hurtis School. Even though it's was very difficult to decision to live ten years of my life in Japan and all of the close friends and family eh the relationship that I built there, I decided to move on with my career, to be able to lead eh as a foreigner, as a female in Japan. I need to switch and I need to move on with my life. Then luckily, as A P U alumni is all over the world, we have so called eh A P U Alumni Association Europe Chapter, where I was elected as a vice president. I was also doing voluntary volunteer work as a club head of Hurtis School International Development Club. Here, this experience eh exposed and made me realize that there is more to do with eh combining different perspective, different mindset, different people eh from different countries to discuss challenge and change or create an impact. So as an uh Europe Chapter Alumni Association, we tried to organize series of events, career development workshop, and online conference with alum, A P U alumni in Europe, and also connect with the students eh in A P U. And and this is uh my current chapter in Germany. I was a project coordinator at NPACT uh where we have a project, smart city project between Jakarta government and the Berlin Senate. I completed my master of international affairs degree and currently a program manager for a very, very interesting, passionate eh project, where we support entrepreneurs from Indonesia, India, Sri Lanka, eh eh Thailand, and other countries in Asia to enter European market via Berlin. This project is supported by the Berlin Senate, uh so the Berlin government, and there is the Community of Asia Berlin, where we try to have the network between Asia and Europe and hence strengthened. So that's about my journey and maybe moving on to the the diversity eh at A P U. One of the things that I would like to emphasize uh the most is in A P U, you can be immer- in immersed in many, many cultures. Shan mentioned about African week, uh there's also Indonesian week and Thai week, where everyone, the students, one hundred sixty students from different countries at A P U can learn different cultures and even eh dance eh Indonesian dance, Thai dance. And it can also be vice versa. I was eh involved in in this extracurricular, extracurricular activities called Arauma. So it's a traditional dance from Aomori, Aomori Prefecture, where you're dancing using the uchiwa and 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 uh and wearing a yukata or haki. And this is also the team that we have there, but was not only Japanese, there are many Indonesians, many, many Abystrians from different countries. And as you can see, eh the the picture on the top, eh the bottom left, eh this is the representative of A P U diversity and inclusion. Eh this is, the nexus I would like to emphasize on on the A P U Alumni Chapter initiation, where we also try to embrace diversity, inclusion in 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 Europe and try to connect this with also A P U students in Japan and other alumni uh around the world. One of the the event that we did this year is A P U Woman in Text. So we invite A P U alumni from Vietnam, uh uh Bulgaria, Indonesia, and so on, uh uh in Hong Kong to explain eh and eh and share their experience as a woman in text to other A P U alumni and the students. We also organized this eh career development and visit to the United Nations in Geneva. So we have in our Europe Chapter Morse as president, me vice president, and Cherry, and also Anne. Four of us, A P U Alumni Europe Chapter are not from Europe. We are from Philippines, Indonesia, and Vietnam. This is A P U. And to share with you about the differences between the diversity uh in the workplace in Japan and Germany, I would really like to recommend you to this book, eh The Culture Map by Erin Mayer. Eh you can see here, this is the 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 graph where they're explaining the differences of communicating, evaluating, persuading, leading, deciding, trusting, disagreeing, and scheduling. There are uh some big difference between Japan and Germany. And after ten years of Japan life, arriving in Germany, of course, I experienced a big, big, big culture shock, and especially in the communicating, because Japan is more um you don't really say it straightforwardly, but in Germany, people just say whatever they want, what's in their mind, without eh having this eh way of without uh having this uh way of uh cookie yoru or thinking about others' people's feeling, which is exactly the opposite of Japan. But how about the diversity and inclusion in Japan versus Germany? I think there are a lot of uh diversity and inclusion that Japan can learn with other countries as well. Of course, Germany is not the top within Europe as a continent, however, based on my experience, there are three that I would like to share with you. The first one is career opportunities. In Japan, it will take me ten more years to be able to become a manager. However, currently in my current organization, I am able to became uh to become a manager and supervise three people in my team. And this is the experience that I think uh Japan has to uh in uh to to improve more because it's not about age, it's about skills. And the growth opportunities are from a young people learning how to lead and vice versa. And the the older people learning from the young people, the different point of view. And uh also gender equality, I think uh this is something that I see uh in my uh in my organization, where there are people who work part-time uh and also full-time, but even though they have uh children and so on, there are no limitation in their tasks, responsibilities and also position. And the second one is the diversity in the workplace. I think in Germany, what what I explained from my uh organization, we have uh fifty-seven people uh from around the world. Fifty-two, more than fifty percent of the employee are not German. And we are an organization based in Berlin. And the average age of my organization is thirty-two years old. I don't know how, I think it's uh two or three generation different with the average age uh for a Japanese uh organization or company. But I think this is what diversity is, having a multinational, multicultural and also cross-generation of people leading uh in the company. And the third one is inclusive environment. I was so fortunate to be able to uh improve my Japanese skills through APU experience. Um and and also got GLPTN one. However, without that, there is no way I could get a job in Japan. Here in my current organization, I speak N four and five of German. And there are still equal opportunity for people like me because I have the skills that are relevant to the job, uh to the to the task and to the responsibilities regardless the language. So the language, this create an inclusive environment that people will then focus more on the skills uh of 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 what is what is relevant to the job, not solely the language. And that's all uh for me. Thank you for listening and I hope this is does not exceed the time.
Thank you very much, I'm Shira for for um sharing your um your experiences. Well, you talked about, you gave us examples of how diversity, inclusion is different in Japan and in Germany. And um I think what what um I would like to, I I I I'm I'm sure our uh participants also would like to know more uh would be about based on your experiences in, at least in these two countries, but of course uh we also have their experience in Indonesia, like how um what does inclusion mean to you? Because I think many people still struggle with, you know, what is diversity, what is inclusion? How is inclusion different from diversity? So if you could just enlighten us on what is inclusion to you based on how you have experienced it so far?
Yes, thank you, uh Professor Alcantara. So for me, based on the this experience of ten years in Japan and two years in Germany, inclusion is where everyone feels accepted, they have the sense of belonging and their diverse skills and strengths are uh recognized. So the uniqueness that Miho and Sean uh shared before are 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 recognized. And that inclusion is where uh the the employer uh also provide with equal opportunities and resources. So there's fairness to everyone regardless their background, race, ethnicity uh and so on. So this is inclusion uh for me.
Yes, and I believe Sean also has mentioned that like listen to them, include them and empower them. And Miho has also mentioned that diversity shouldn't be just on the surface. You you should be able to um make them feel safe, right? Psychological
Exactly.
logical safety is is important. So now that we have heard from the three of you about your experiences and what your views are regarding diversity, inclusion, I would like to ask more questions about DNI, of course, um questions that are related to our theme today. So the first question I um I have is about why diversity, inclusion? Why do you think diversity, inclusion is important for the future of Japan? And with uh with this question, I would like to start with Miho. So Miho, um could you share with us your your thought on this um question?
Sure, thank you for the questions as um Japanese outside Japan. Uh I see Japan very differently maybe. Um growing in Japan where people are not uh taught not to be different or deviate the path of mainstream. But uh the world is really changing rapidly and you need to have agility to survive even. I think COVID nineteen really taught us to be and how we have to have flexibility to survive and make things move in the context that we could do. So uh it's very important for Japan to really uh open up their mind and you know, think about the error is now uh error of uh collaboration, not pushing your culture or pushing your uh values to the other party. So be open-minded and accept others and try to build something together is something that is very needed and Japan is, I believe, really lacking behind it. Japan is also good country, but there are a lot of other good countries and the different things that out there in the world, so they really have to be open-minded and accept and think that there are many different good things around there. It's not, Japan is the best of anything. So that that's something that is very important, otherwise Japan will be very much a lot behind in. So I really hope Japan will be open for something bettering out there.
Yeah, so so what you're saying, Miho, is that embracing diversity, inclusion would open up new possibilities for Japan, right? And and you're saying that then people would also be more um appreciative of the differences, of the uniqueness that um people have, and that could lead to new opportunities as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Miho. How about um Shen? What do you think? Why is it, why DNI is important for the future of Japan?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. Uh I think it's a lot of the the part, a lot of people uh in Japan and including the other countries and also the the participants are wondering also about that. Uh but my 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 only, probably the the answer for that will be the, one of the reason is that Japan is uh the old population or the population is uh squeezing, the it's narrowing down. Uh and also the elder population of working force uh becoming the main of the the whole the the population. So they are in need of the workforce and then they need it from overseas. Uh and also at the same time, they have to keep their, what's they call the Japan number one sort of, you know, that they were always the top country, uh one of the the developing countries in the world, uh powerful and and that they have to keep that. The most, both the what they call the politically and also the economically at the same time that the internal, the the workforce. So in order to keep that, the well-balanced, they are in need of the foreign uh employees, I would say workforce. So this is a one thing that I see that the the DNI is very important because that I I started to feel, to be honest, that when I talk to the foreigners uh who are coming to Japan, including APU students who come to Japan, but they started to rethink about their career in Japan because of this, all this, the struggles they, they said, why I have to waste my time? Then they go to Singapore. Now in Singapore, it's becoming as a one of the big hub for that. So I think in order to not to lose that, the as a the, how can I say, not to lose that, the opportunity market or the hub to Singapore, they have to keep that and they have to start thinking carefully about the DNA, uh sorry, DNI. So as I mentioned that, I think this is very important for Japan and they have to the make it fast, I would say.
Oh, so with DNI, Japan would have um better and larger access to better and more talents, right? So not, well, in addition to having access uh with DNI, they can also then retain those talents to stay in Japan. And Shira actually mentioned in her presentation that um like when she was thinking of advancing her career, she thought of leaving Japan, moving to another country, right, Shira? And so I I guess um Shira was an illustration of what um Shen was um
Exactly.
Right?
Exactly.
Hmm, right, well, thanks um Shen. So Sh- Shira, what are your thoughts on this question?
Uh, thank you, Alcantara Sensei. I think there are uh several research that uh also one of them is from McKinsey. They're saying that uh with higher, for example, gen- gender diversity levels on the senior team, uh twenty percent more likely to have uh average, above-average profitability than those with lower gender diversity. And also in addition to that, uh it it rose to uh thirty-six percent for companies with ethnic diversity. So research and data proven to be that if you have an ethnic diversity and gender diversity in your team, also uh and senior team, uh then you will have a better profitability in your companies. I think uh it's not that diversity equal to profit, however, uh there are ways that diversity and inclusion can change the productivity and effectiveness within your organization and creating an output of or outcome that you have an innovation uh within certain business or you have a different ideas, uh better ideas of how things can be done and that uh what I argue or assume is then uh relate to the 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 o- outcome or output that the company can 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 gain.
That's true. So then uh what Shira has shared with us is that with with DNI, Japan could could actually um achieve much more, right? Great um greater innovation.
Yes.
Greater creativity. And 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 you're right, Shira, research actually has shown um evidence that diversity is linked to innovation and creativity. However, many organizations, institutions fail to realize that link of having positive effect of diversity on innovation and and creativity. And what we recently um I think founded and I think are uh what we are claiming right now with the inclusion, with with DNI is that it's with DNI that you're able to achieve that positive link with diversity and innovation. Because with inclu- we, it it's through inclusion that you're able to leverage the power of diversity, like the benefits of diversity, right? Because without inclusion, then people are just members of your organizations. Whether they're engaged, that's a question, whether they are able to, you know, share their ideas if they whether they feel safe to share those ideas, that's that's still a question without inclusion, right? So um so thank you for um for sharing that um, Shira. So with DNI, Japan could achieve much more. And I think Shen has additional comments on 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 this question?
Yeah, the as as Shira said that, you know, that I worked as a, I was helping the our the HR department for around roughly five, six years and I was also in the process of the recruitment. And you can see that when you talk to the foreigners, they said they always compared like the how can I achieve that manager level or the higher level in the company? And then they look at me, okay, you worked for seven years or ten years, who are you and what's your level? So you know, this kind of the question obviously come. So they they start thinking about this. This is the first thing. And the second thing is that will be my voice be heard or accepted? So this is very important, especially in the this, the the young generation, they are very keen about that. And I could say that uh by just looking at them, if you cannot provide the proper environment, atmosphere that the, how can I say, meets the demands in the, within the the DNI, I think that the the global talents or the smart people, they move to the different companies, obviously. Or they go to even to different uh countries. Then that's where you lose it. You lose the competitiveness of the the workforce and you lose the the basically in the business over in ultimate ultimately, you know? So this kind of things, I think that it's a very important, not only for whole Japan, but also the even within the small or big companies, they have to start thinking about that, you know? And that's what I wanted to add.
Yes, thank you. So what what the three of you actually have shared uh um is um saying that you know, DNI offers a lot of benefits, advantages to um to Japan. So um they gain something from it. With inclusion, there's a lot of, there there are many possibilities that, you know, that would come along, but without it, Japan could also lose a lot of things, right? I think um Shen, that's what um Shen is 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 trying to um con- convey. Um so the second question that I have and and I think Shen would wo- wo- would be the first one to answer this question as he has already started, uh started up um explaining about it. What do you think are the challenges Japan has on DNI?
Uh, thank you very much, yeah. I think a lot of challenge, not only for the the companies, but also the people work here, you know, that when the the demands are not met, they have to start thinking about the where they can find it. Uh the places where the demands will be met. So yeah. The one thing, I think that the Japanese people are very well-known for the 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 I would say that the the kanji, the 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 symbol wa, you know, the Japanese wa, the circle. The circle is so well-connected and well-established. Well, it's so established that that they have the good, the circle, but sometimes it's a struggle for the other people to enter to that circle if you are not from that circle. So this is a big challenge, I would say that the and uh and another one, I would say that it's it's a Japanese identity, you know? When you think about the DNI, you have to also at the same time keep up the your own identity. So on the the, what do you call that the, what makes you Japan? So this might be the also, especially why I'm talking this, especially for Japanese people or the in Japan, they try, they tend to keep their identity, they hold on it. And when you talk to the Japanese people, they said for a long time, although the Western culture or other culture came, but they still stick on their uh the uh the culture. Maybe that's one of the reason why the DNI is not being able to the the, how can I say, the the spread or the the develop in this uh country. And uh one thing I would say that the the career opportunities from myself as a being the foreigner here, they always age, skill, fight each other. No matter how the good your skill or your talent, that you still have to say, wait for while because the ages prior to race, you know? This kind of thing, I think it's a big challenge. If they can uh overcome and the the, how can I say, solve this problem, maybe the the challenge can be solved also.
Oh, yes. So um seniority system, you you're saying is 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 one of the, one of the challenges that um Japan, um Japan has. And I believe Miho and Shira also would share with us what challenges Um Japan um Japan has. And I believe Miho and Shira also would share with us what challenges. They think Japan has on D N I. So let's start with um um Miho.
Yes, thank you. I think it's so simple, but I think English ability is one of the biggest challenge that I see. That e- e- even today that we need some translators going on. But the world where you go outside, everybody is speaking English. It doesn't have to be perfect. But you just have to, you know, uh try to catch up with the world, but uh. It it's just so important. It's just a tool to express your ideas and no other perspective which. People are talking about Japan in English, which is so different from what media in Japan, in Japanese are talking about, which. You really have to open up mind and you have to have English ability. To grasp the ideas and information that is in different language. That is a must for every single Japanese in. Japan, I believe, and and really hope everyone will really be able to use it, which. When we are in outside that uh. E- e- even though that the people will say that nobody will believe that I'm Japanese because I speak English, that that is something that is. In a way ridiculous that, oh, you speak good English, which every single person I meet in Singapore people will. Still praise me for being able to speak English. That is the image of Japanese with zero English that is so sad right now. Which I really hope Japan will take it very seriously. It is not about, you know, speaking a perfect English. It it's about you have to know how to deliver your message in other language. I really believe it's the biggest challenge and you really have to overcome it.
Yeah. Well, you'll be happy to know, Miho, that many of your Japanese co-hires in A P U right now are are doing an excellent job with their English skills, so.
Outside A P U.
Yeah, so if I if I would connect actually what you said and also Shen said like about circle, like, you know, um. We he individuals, human beings, we have that natural tendency actually of making our own circle. Right? And and we we tend to connect more, communicate more, engage more with those people within our circle. But I think what Miho is also then um um trying to tell us is that with English as a tool. English could be your tool to expand your circle because inclusive people actually have that ability of expanding their inner. Their their cir- circle, like people they would engage with. And as Jen has mentioned, it's very important that you. It's a very, very important that you are within that circle. And I think that's that that's true for many, for many people, for. Including myself, because it's easier for us to connect with those people who are close with us, right? But I think the key is that how can we then expand that circle that we have? And it and then through be by being inclusive, by using language as a tool, then we expand that circle of people we engage with. Right? So thanks, um Miho and Shen. Shira?
Yes, I uh absolutely agree with Sean and uh Miho just just shared uh this. Hierarchical uh that is within the Japanese uh culture and identity and also the circle. Which I learned at A P U in the first uh semester at the workshop place, Uchi and Soto. Um, English also, I I I do agree with Miho that it's it's one of the the blocker. Or 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 the bottleneck of of the challenge in uh of D N I. But adding to that, I would like to say that. Uh willingness of of uh top management and embracing uh. D N I because of the outdated mindset of. Ha- the role of woman in the workforce, for example. And also uh the the concept of. Doing the things as it is. Like, we've been doing it for thirty years. Why should we change? Uh let's keep it. I think that's that's one of, that's two of the challenges that I think is really big because. Then if you stop asking why and encouraging people to. Think critically, uh I there there won't be any evolution to diversity and inclusion and that's. The fundamental thing that I that I uh that I that I strongly eh. Uh think that is the challenge that Japan has. Eh we because we cannot ask why. Uh this is this is uh then discourage people to have a critical thinking and and to to. To to think, okay, then why diversity and inclusion is important? We've been doing the same thirty years, we don't need to change. So this need, this mindset needs to change the role of women in the workforce in Japan. Uh now, I think without both parents working, education is becoming more and more expensive as well. But if the company change uh the the that woman can only work. Woman cannot go back to work after uh after uh caring, taking care of the child after five years and so on. Or uh for example, increasing the place of the kindergarten, uh how how do you say it in? In in Japanese, eh. Uh then there there is no possibility for women to work again because the government doesn't provide the place. Uh for 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 the parents to collaborate, like as Miho said, this is the era of collaboration. It's needs not only one side, but both sides. So that's, I hope. This answer your your question about the challenge, uh Alcantara Sensei.
So so to you, like um gender biases, gender stereotyping are critical issues that um Japan needs to overcome. And that would require, as you mentioned, like a more systemic um approach because it's it's all linked to. Um to how women can can continue working and also ex- ex- excel at at their work. Yeah, so well, now we have discussed about what are the po- possibilities or opportunities that may arise. If Japan would fully embrace D N I. We also discuss about the challenges um facing um Japan when it comes to D N I. Now let's hear some possible solutions. And I think um uh what what I could ask from you is like um. Um if you could share any, you know, or one best practice of of D N I that you have experienced. Um in the in organizations that you have worked with, um I think that would be um. Really insightful for us um to know. And of course, and it's up to our participants then to um uh to think critically, right, um um Shira? And um to to find out which uh which practice would suit uh would suit them better. Yeah, so may I ask um Miho first for this question?
Sure, thank you for the questions, Mihi. One of the experience that I had is the company that I'm working right now that uh. When uh new employee join the company, they will have to take the Strengths Finder test. Which will give you uh the ranking of your tendency of the skills from top to the bottom. And the important thing is that i- it's not about knowing your strengths only, but it's also important that. You can openly share what are your weakness and the company has to be the way that uh. We accept your strengths and also the weakness. And the management has to be able to. Manage the talents of what you are good at and at the same time what you are not good at, which. You will not be enjoying. But at the same time, if you know the good and bad about or the weakness. And the strengths, you can have the next hiring plan where you can get outside talents to welcome. To complement the weakness of the organization and you can have another blood to. Strength the skills of the work organizations, which is very important. And nobody is perfect, you know, but. You know, e- everyone cannot be perfect. So it's okay that you have strengths and also the weakness and i- it's okay that you have. The way to complement each other's strengths and weaknesses. That that's how we, you know. Embrace the diversity and you include the people who are not good at something. But I can help you so we can do better together. You know, that that is the team that we would like to have it and if you're trying to do it right now. I hope that gives some insights of how you can think of the talent management in the company.
Thanks, Miho. So a system that allows employees to know what their strengths and weaknesses are. And letting them know it's okay because you are there to help them overcome those weaknesses. Okay, thanks, Miho. Shen?
Uh while while Miho was uh sharing her experience, I was also thinking that what I had and also I think I have a lot of. Things to share, but I will focus on the two. Yes, 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 I will share that. Uh we had a project that it was in the the holding, when I was in the holding. Uh in the corporate department that uh uh I I had been doing this this project, special project for almost uh two years. That we do it a regular base on that. So I had this enough experience and I had also was the leader of that project. But uh and all the time that that after I finished the project, my boss presents to the top management. And I never see that the audience and I I never see the 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 reaction of the audience, how well. The the report or the project was accepted. And I always get the email or later few, oh, you got that. Oh, this kind of, oh, it was good. That kind of thing. So it was a little bit demotivated me at the time, but then. I had this the good connection with my boss at the time, luckily, that. And we had this kind of rough discussion all the time while making this project, you know, by finalizing this. So I kept like kind of asking him to give me the opportunity. So uh. Instead of he saying me, oh, you know, you are foreigner or you your language is. Uh not enough to present to the top management in Japanese, or instead of saying you are still the. The Ipan shine, like normal employer, not like any man- managerial level or any level. You don't have any level yet. He didn't say that one, he said, let me talk to our uh the what you call the 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 bucho. So he said, after that, he said, okay, let's divide it into two and then uh you present this. Part and then I present this part. So we divided and I had the chance to present that one. And trust me, from that moment, my life and my expectation for this company at least changed at the time, you know? So because I had the chance to present it and I had the chance to see the all nine board of directors of this uh company. Uh the holding company who has the family of one hundred forty uh companies, the subsidiaries all over the world. So I had the chance to meet them, to present myself, to talk to them, you know? So and it it wasn't had and it wasn't the only once, but I had at least four or five times during that time. So that was a, I felt that this is what you call the diversity or that's what you call the the inclusion. I'm a part of that organization, they listen to me. So that kept me motivating and that part actually. Motivates me still to empower the young generation that who joins to the company because. First, we have to a little bit the stubborn or we have to work hard enough to fight for rights at the same time. Uh to get accepted. That's what I feel that the the one of the good, the remembering the the experience I had.
Thanks, Shan. So giving employees a chance to contribute, right, and play with their strength. Thank you. Now, Shira?
Exactly.
Yes, uh thank you, uh Professor. I think uh for me, the solution is that. Diversity and inclusion is so complex that we need a learning journey. So the the organization. Need to invest on uh the diversity and inclusion, learning and education. One of uh the example that I can share from where from my organization is we have a quarterly. Uh retreat where, well, in this in this time of the 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 COVID. Uh where we have more than uh almost sixty percents of employees that are not from Germany, we are doing it online. And during this quarterly retreat, we are divided into different task force. Where people can have accountability and ownership to uh propose. Im- improvement to the organization. And this then uh well, we will have the session with the management saying, okay. Uh I have this question, what are your thoughts? So these two ways of making the. Employee has accountability to propose an improvement to the organization and the management themselves, they're listening to it. And the quarterly retreat where it's not als- only about the business, but it's also about bonding uh as a team. Together uh to understand each other, understand different cultures and the business cultures and the perspective. Uh in in doing work and uh put them into small discussion group in the breakout rooms to. Discuss, argue and find a solution to improve the organization together, which is more consensual. Uh not the top down uh decision making. This, I think it's a it's a great example of diversity and inclusion and. As Shen heard, then it will motivate and the the employee and also makes us feel hurt. Then it's also uh the application and execution and implementa- implementation of that. And uh what we had then from this discussion is to have a learning cafe. So every Thursday evening. Uh from two to three P M uh Europe time, we have a learning cafe where we have different uh topic. Including diversity and inclusion, leadership, uh interculture, communication, so that. We are learning together as as an organization. I think that's a the best practice example I would like to share.
Thanks, Shira, for providing a platform to connect, to share ideas and also to be recognized. Thanks. And also one solution or one solution that we could also offer is actually joining um. A P U's mission of promoting diversity inclu- um um inclusion. There are so, uh there are um many opportunities that I I think. Um companies um can can have um together with A P U and I'll just um present them very briefly. These three opportunities, three ways on how um people can advance D N I with um with A P U. Well, the first um the the first um opportunity is joining our capstone course. So capstone is a required. Um course for all um business students and in 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 this course. International and domestic based students are mixed together. Our company client would come with their problem. They will bring a problem and our student students would then come up with with a solution. So that's our capstone course. Um the second opportunity is about uh sponsoring an event or research on D N I. So in A P U, we have. Center for Inclusive Leadership uh that promotes D N I in research, practice and and in education. So we do have faculty who do research. Related to diversity inclusion. So if companies would like to know more about D N I within their company, then our faculty, research members could also help with that. And we can also then um organize events on their behalf. And another third opportunity would be joining what we call Global Competency Enhancement Program. And this is a short term business training uh where we welcome business executives, some employees. Um to learn more about different aspects of business and of course that in this program, they can focus on developing. Their appreciation, understanding of D N I and also cross cultural communication. So we do hope that with these three opportunities that many people would join us in our mission of promoting D N I in Japan. So. Thank you very much, uh Miho, Shen and Shira for sharing your thoughts and experiences on D N I. And I do hope that. Many of our participants would continue to learn more about D N I because as you have mentioned, D N I. Offers a lot of opportunities, advantages to Japan. At the same time, there are still challenges that we need to overcome together. And those challenges cannot be sold by one person, one institution al- alone. We need everyone to be. Involved in um overcoming those um challenges. So an hour and a half just quickly passed. Um so thank you very, uh thank you very much, everyone for your attention and I hope that the session has been a great learning opportunity. And an inspiration for you as as it has been for me. And um Shira, Miho and Shen, I do hope that I'll I get to see you. Very soon and in person. Thank you very much. Thank you.